April 7th, Inkster City Council Meeting is now called to order. Everyone please stand for our prayer. Gabe Henderson, can you lead us? Lead us in prayer.
I'm a bachelor and you gonna have me. Oh Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to come collectively in positive thought of making Inkster a better, better place. Yes, we love Inkster. You know, we don't have a lot of money, but we got a whole lot of good spirit in this community and all that. So just help us along, and we know we're all sisters and brothers, and we gonna work together, and we gonna turn this world around. And this gonna start right here. You know they say that this little town of Bethlehem, 2,000 some years ago, I say this little town of Inkster, this way it's gonna start for all the improvement on this face of this earth. Thank you. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. Everybody remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mayor Byron Nolan.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Chisholm, excused, Councilwoman Rutledge.
Present.
Councilman Bishop.
Present.
Councilwoman Scott.
Present.
Councilwoman Howard.
Here.
Councilwoman Richardson. Mayor, you have a call.
All right, all right. Everybody had chairs, look at the agenda. We added item J.
We gotta remove something.
What have we moved? We gotta remove that something. Is that a part of the Senate agenda?
What's that?
We gotta remove that one that we saved.
Oh yeah, that's item B.
Okay, okay.
So we got item J, we added one item. Is anything else we need to do on the agenda? Councilwoman Brothers, you were saying?
Some move.
Been probably moving second in discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. It passes. Presentation, Senator Dana Polhanki, our Michigan State Senator, come on up.
Thank you.
Uh oh, I didn't know you, I know you need a little assistance.
Well, I'll play the story here.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. So we had a very spirited coffee hour, my coffee hour, in Inkster two weeks ago. There's like 50 people there, one guy, you know, laughed, screaming, and boy, it was spirited. But anyway, the very next morning, I got in a car crash, and this happened. So that's what this is. I appreciate airbags, they saved my life, and they also kinda kicked my butt as well at the same time. So, um, thank you for letting me do this legislative update today. There are some things that I think that you would wanna know that we're doing in Lansing. So I am the state senator for Inkster. Also, I live in Livonia, and I represent part of Livonia. I also represent all of Canton, Westland, and Garden City. I am the education chairwoman of the Michigan Senate in the majority party, so, which is nice. And that's the policy side, so laws affecting schools. I'm also the vice chair of the money side, the appropriation side, in the majority. So there's a lot of really cool things you can do with power. It's good to have power, isn't it? So one thing that we did, and it doesn't hurt that the chairman of the money side represents the city of Wayne, and I represent the city of Westland. So Wayne-Westland Community Schools tends to make out pretty well between the two of us. So one thing that we did last year, and then I'm pretty proud of, is we paid for Wayne-Westland kids whose families may be struggling a little bit to have free driver's ed. When I was a kid, 16, I got my driver's ed for free. Maybe some of you did too, it was just part of going to school. Well, it's very expensive nowadays, it's cost prohibitive, and not to mention, you know, ensuring a young driver is cost prohibitive. So the Secretary of State Benson and I would love to see this happen across the state, but they said do a pilot. So we chose Wayne-Westland Community Schools to do a pilot, and it was very successful. So I will be fighting to continue that again. That was, I think, $250,000, which in the scope of budgets is very, very small. I'm also, um, this is a biggie, and this is my baby. So I was also a teacher for 20 years, high school English teacher, so education's kinda my thing. So aside from a quality teacher in the classroom teaching your kid, I think the next best thing that would promote learning is small class sizes. So some, and especially in the early grades, K through 3, and especially in districts where a lot of the residents, maybe there's a high poverty district, okay? So what I'm proposing to do, because Wayne-Westland falls into that category, is I'm going to try to deliver $12 billion to a pilot, including Wayne-Westland Community Schools, and we're gonna have class size caps for K-3 students in Wayne-Westland Community Schools. So no more 25 kids in a classroom. They're gonna be 13, 15, something like that, that's manageable, so the teacher can have one-on-one with the kid. You know what I mean? So, I said, you said it, you're the very first people to hear that, so I hope I can come next time and say it happened. I'm gonna fight like hell, heck for it, sorry. I met with the governor's people today, and I said, "This is my baby, so we're gonna do it." And then I met with the superintendent of just instruction, I said, "This is my baby, and we're gonna do it." So we're gonna hope to do it. So other things that are important to us is we wanna continue the universal free school meals, breakfast and lunch, and we also want to make school safety and mental health a rolling budget item, instead of like a post-COVID era thing. We think this is important to continue forever. So, um, another thing we did, which I, around schools, which I think is important, is last year, February 13th, the child safe storage gun law took place. So it's a very serious law, and I'm pretty proud of it, but if you, if a child, a minor in your presence, doesn't have to be related to you, takes a weapon from your coffee table or your truck or whatever, and even brandishes it and gets caught, there's a stiff penalty, and it goes all the way up to if the child kills themselves or another, you get due process, but you're gonna maybe do time for up to 15 years. Very serious, because kids and guns don't mix, and the parents and adults have to be responsible and not let them have access to the guns. So one thing that we, that I fought for is for every kid, I suppose if they're young, they get like a flyer in the backpack, goes home to the parents, says, "Look, you can get these free safe storage gun locks, you gotta keep these guns safe." So we're gonna do a whole education campaign on that, because people don't know about it. Moving on from education, there's a couple things we did in lame duck of last year. Lame duck is a period where a bunch of bills tend to get rammed through, and I'm not gonna lie, it was a complete disaster this year for my party, which is the Democratic Party. We had one Democrat who decided she wasn't a Democrat anymore, and huddled up with the Republicans, and killed 250 bills. Nine of which were mine. Now, mind you, the whole Republican side didn't show up either, so, but Republicans plus one made it, so everything just, just was a disaster. So even though 250 of our Senate bills died, 100 and some change, House bills came over to us on the Senate. And we sat in our chairs, God bless Cory Booker for his like filibuster, my gosh, he talked the whole time, well, we sat the whole time. We sat for 29 hours straight, no sleep, and we pushed buttons. It wasn't like a Booker feat, but it, we stayed, we stayed, and we, I'll be damned if we didn't pass over 100 bills and, uh, over, over that 29-hour period. But some of them, I'd like to talk to you about today. There was the child safe storage notification, statute of limitations for criminal sexual conduct indictments in the second and third degree. It used to be if you're, if you, you know, were a pedophile, and you had a crime, a criminal sexual conduct against a child, if that chi, if that child or the child's parents didn't get you within a certain number of years, and didn't like have it whatever in you it takes to say, "I'm gonna go report this," there was a statute of limitations, after which you aren't allowed anymore to bring charges up against a pedophile. That's gone now. Okay? That's gone now. So, so, so pedophiles beware, okay? There's no statute of limitations anymore. Amen. And then, let's see, some of the economic things that we did, which I think are really good. When Governor Snyder was in office, if you filed for unemployment, he took the number of weeks that you could get unemployment from 26 weeks down to 20. We put it back to 26.
All right.
Yeah, that's good. And then we also took it from 362 a week to 614 a week. Okay? Now, it's ramping up to 614, but I think by, in the next couple years, it will be up to 614. So that's unemployment where if you're unemployed, you can actually, you know, live. Another thing that we did is there was a ballot initiative to provide, and the voters of Michigan were denied the right to vote on this by a really no-good process called Adopt and Amend that my Republican colleagues did, and it was found unconstitutional by the Michigan Supreme Court. So, long story short, in the beginning of this year, we, um, we made it happen, okay? Cause they had, my Republican colleagues adopted it, and then they completely gutted it, so it was terrible. So what you have now is if you work for a business with 40 or more employees, sorry, with, if you work for a large business, sorry, with I think over 10 employees, you get 40 hours of earned sick time. Guaranteed to you. Okay? Oh, I'm sorry, you know, I'm, my number's here. Let me say that again. If you work for a large company, you get 72 hours of earned sick time. That's better. So a large company would be 10 or more. If you work for a small company, that's 10 or fewer employees, you get the 40 hours. That's what I meant to say. So no matter what, if you get sick, your employer has to pay you to stay home for whatever reason for either 40 or 72 hours, period, it's the law. Minimum wage is also going up to $15 an hour by 2027, so that's gonna go up as well. There was also one that I liked, it's about housing. Housing is just, it's not affordable at all. So we made a law that says landlords can't deny a renter based on source of income. So if you have a housing voucher or something like, we're getting rid of that kind of discrimination. I thought that was a good one. And I think, I think I've said all I wanted to say about legislation. I have a, my, my last coffee hour was in Inkster, but you should follow me on Facebook if you're interested in coming to my coffee hours. And all this stuff, like, that I'm telling you now, I post on my, I do all my own social media, so every social media post is me actually doing it. And sometimes I get in trouble, cause I answer the trolls, and then that gets me in trouble, but I try not to do that. We all try not to do that. So, but, um, it's @senpolhanki, S-E-N. My name is spelled P-O-L-E-H-A-N-K-I, Dana with a Y, D-A-Y-N-A. So Facebook, my Facebook on that is very active, I post every day. And then something good that I'm doing with United States Congresswoman Debbie Dingell is we're having a town hall in Canton on April 21st, and that's a Monday at 5:30 at the Summit on the Park, I think it's called. Summit on the Park in Canton, April 21st at 5:30. This is where you can kind of unload about President Trump and the things that that administration is doing right now that, that I'm not a fan of, and you may also not be a fan of. So she knows a lot more in that space, because she flies to DC every week, I go to Lansing. So that's the remainder of my comments. I don't know if you do questions, sometimes people do, sometimes they don't.
Anybody have any short questions?
I don't know.
Yes.
Because of what the federal governments are doing regarding the Department of Education, how does that affect the public schools and the charter schools?
Right. Charter schools are public schools, so just wanna always make that clear. Well, you know, I'm a fan of WWE wrestling, but I'm not a fan of Linda McMahon, who has no business at all being the Ed Secretary. So, but she was tasked with ending the department, and she's going to, President Trump, when he does a "I do by declare" an executive order, they don't mean anything. Only a few people can make laws. Me, as a state legislator, and Rashida or Debbie Dingell as congresspeople, like, we make the laws, he can I hereby declare all he wants, but unless Congress does it, then it ain't gonna happen, okay? But what they can do is kill it with death by a thousand cuts. They can do things like, one thing she did is, she said, "These grants that you are supposed to get, um, that you are supposed to have," like, what's, what's, let's say March 25th. March 25th at 2026, March 25th, 2026, you get, was the deadline for these grants. On March 25th, 2025, at 5:00 PM, she said, "I'm changing the deadline date. It's no longer March 25th of 2026, it's today, and oh, by the way, it's after 5 o'clock business hour, so it already passed, so I just took all your money." So they can do it that way, and they are. That's evil. So now, um, all of it. It's all, all of it. So, um, so I try not to fear monger, you know, I'm not going on, "They're gonna take your social security," you know, until I have strong evidence that they're gonna take your social security or Medicaid. So I'm in the wait and see right now. So right now, I'm in the wait and see. Our money is locked from the federal government, and it's billions, until I think July 1st. After July 1st, they're gonna start over, and they can change distribution formulas, they can cancel grants, they can do whatever they want. So after July 1st, I wanna see like, if the money goes away, or if the way they disperse it changes, and then we're gonna have serious problems. They said it won't, but I don't know that for sure.
All right, anybody else? Well, thank you, Senator, we appreciate you coming.
Okay.
So we got a consent agenda.
Approval of regular city council meeting minutes from March 17th, 2025.
Been properly moved and supported, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes. Boards and commissions.
Approval to appoint Gwendolyn Rogers to the beautification committee.
Some move.
Been properly moved to second, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. It passes.
Approval to appoint Phyllis M. Long to the beautification committee.
Some move, second.
Been properly moved to second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say nay. It passes.
Mr. Mayor, I have a motion I would like to make, please.
Make it.
I'd like to make a motion, since the compensation commission has concluded their determinations, and it's been certified through the clerk, to remove the compensation members from the compensation board.
Any second?
Second.
Been properly moved to second, discussion.
Is that all the members of it?
All the members.
All the members. Okay.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes. We have no ordinance tonight, so we're on to new business.
Consider approval for Juneteenth Celebration Parade. Event date, Saturday, June 14th, 2025. Event hours, 12:30 PM to 1:45 PM. Small parade with floats, vans, and walkers. Location, Hamlin Drive, Inkster, Michigan. Street to close, Hamlin Drive from Michigan Avenue to Inkster Road.
Some move, second.
Been properly moved to second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. It passes. Next item, I think needs to be taken off the table.
Consider approval to purchase five vacant parcels, case LD25-03. The parcels are located between Metal Dale Avenue and John Daly Avenue. Parcel IDs noted, in the amount of $10,500. Deanna Moss, CFO of Armstrong Development Group, would like the land to build single-family affordable housing residential homes.
Remove to take off the table, Mayor.
It's been a motion to take it off the table, it's been seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Oh.
Thank you.
All right, so it's off the table, so now we consider, we don't need to reread it. Do we have a motion to approve the sale? Do we have any motion? Is the applicant here? Do we have any motion on item B? Going once, going twice, gone. Okay, item B fails. Item C.
Consider approval of issuing a replacement deed for 26115 Dunning, Inkster, Michigan, legally described as noted, parcel ID noted, to Habitat for Humanity.
Support.
Been properly moved and supported, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. It passes.
Consider approval of the administration submitting recommendation to the city council for accepting of a bid for the construction of the Senior Wellness Center at the Dozier Recreation Center. The administration is submitting this item to council for their review and consideration.
Move to approve.
Second.
Been properly moved to second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. It passes.
Consider amending resolution 1124-260FR, Neighborhood Enterprise Zone NEZ Certificate. Application request, the application proposes to break the project down into four phases for funding purposes. Each phase will require a separate NEZ certificate application with a different LLC name.
Some move.
Second. Been properly moved to second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
It passes.
Consider authorization for the city of Inkster to solicit applicants from developers to participate in the Inkster Neighborhood Stabilization Program 2025 through 2026 to redevelop rehabilitate foreclosed properties assigned to through the first right of refusal.
Second. Been properly moved to second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. It passes.
Consider approving or denying a special land use 25-03 to allow for automobile service station and to allow for liquor, beer, and wine sales in the B3 General Business Zone District at 2617 Middlebelt Road. Site is located on the northeast corner of Middlebelt Road and Michigan Avenue. This item was tabled per the applicant request at the March 3rd, 2025 city council meeting.
Okay, so that means we need to take it off the table, and then we need two separate motions, one for automobile service station, which is a gas station, and one for the liquor, beer, and wine sales. So any motion to take it off the table?
I'd support that.
Second.
Been properly moved to second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, it's off the table. Now we need a motion on the service station part.
Still moved? For the service station?
Okay.
Did we just say the whole thing?
Um, no, you don't have to say it.
Support.
To allow the service station. So probably moved and supported, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say nay. It passes. Now we need another motion on the liquor, beer, and wine sales.
I'm sorry, was there a nay on that?
I'm sorry, was it a nay?
Yeah.
No, I didn't hear a nay.
I don't hear any nays.
Oh, oh, okay. Do we have a motion on the liquor, beer, and wine sales, special land use?
Move to deny, Mayor.
Second. Been properly moved to second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. It fails. I mean, it passes.
Consider authorizing the administration to enter into an agreement with Giffords Webster for Phase 3 of Greenway Trail for design and oversight. Adoption, adopt the resolution attached for the request for funding for this project.
Some move.
Second. Been properly moved to second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. It passes.
Consider planning commission recommendation to deny the application for zoning amendment to allow vehicle repair facility major in General Business District.
Still moved?
Now what are you moving?
Oh, it just says in there, recommendation to deny, so I, to make recommendation to deny.
Deny, okay. It's been properly moved, any second?
Support.
Properly moved to second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, passes.
Consider approval of street closure, streets to be closed, northland between Carlisle and Beach, date and time, April 12th, 2025, 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Block party coordinator, Yvonne Moore, for unity in the community, Easter egg hunt.
Some move, support.
Been properly moved and supported, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes. All the participation. Lisa B.
Good evening, good evening, good evening.
Good evening.
So first, I just want to congratulate just the support of everyone on this Saturday. We had a Project Prom event where we collected well over 100 prom gowns, shoes, jewelry, and there was an outpour of girls that came in and said yes to the dress. And so it was such an amazing event, we'll be doing a raffle calling the girls this week, where they will be selected to win free service of hair, makeup, and nails. So it was an amazing event, I am just truly thankful of everyone who came out and supported. And, you know, things like this, we need to continue to support, especially for our youth. So now these girls don't have to worry about anything for prom, they have their dresses, they're also able to get free alterations if they need them. So it was a really good cause that put a lot of smiles on a lot of girls' faces. What we have next, if you guys have kinda noticed, we have this trend of moving and getting in shape and just, you know, having a lot of fun, and so we've been doing... And so we've been doing hustle classes on Thursday over at the rec. They've been successful. Everybody's popping their fans and having, you know, a lot, a lot of fun. And so that's something that we'll continue to do first and third Thursdays at the rec center between six and eight. Cost is five dollars, so make sure you guys come out. I do have tickets for the next class that'll be on the seventeenth. Another thing that we started doing that is backed by popular demand is Trap Bingo. Everybody's been waiting for Trap Bingo. So April eighteenth, get ready. Trap Bingo will be back. Tickets are ten dollars, and you can purchase those tonight if you want to as well. And last but not least, we are doing a class Zumba Blaze. And so we actually have one of the dance participants who she teaches a class over at L.A. Fitness, and she wants to bring her entire class here to Inkster. And so she'll be bringing all of her members. This will be a paid course, so the funds will continue to go to community initiatives as well as just drawing positive attention to the city. So we're really excited about that. And the first class will be April twenty-fourth and moving forward, second and fourth Thursday at the rec. Ten dollars, time is at six o'clock. So you guys, make sure you come out, have a lot of fun. Support these events so we can continue to have these things. And also, you know, just to continue to have that positive energy for the city. You know, it's, it's something that, you know, we strive to, to continue to do. And actually, last business is the parade. As we all know, the Memorial Day Parade will be coming up on May twenty-sixth. We are still looking for participants. We are really looking for veterans as well. So if anyone knows any veterans, particularly in the city of Inkster, that we would love to acknowledge. Anyone has any additional performances or things of that nature that you would like to see in the parade, please let me know. I do have forms here tonight. There is an online form as well. And also, we are collecting donations, as I stated, because, you know, these things are not free. So, you know, we would love, you know, to have everyone just, you know, support in any way that you can, even if it's not monetary, if it's something that you can donate and support, you know, towards to make a successful parade. And that's about it. Anyone has any questions? All right.
Stephanie Richards.
Hello, hello, everyone.
Hello.
Hello, thanks for having me. I am your Western Wayne Community Liaison for the Wayne County Sheriff's Office, for those who don't know me. But I just wanted to come and say thank you for all of your support, for welcoming me into your community. I have had the pleasure of being involved now in several different of your events, and it is just a blast. Councilwoman Richardson, thank you for allowing me to come out and speak at your community event and give away some gun locks and talk to your residents. It was, it was, it was eye-opening, for one, because you have some of the most engaged community members in your community. And I found that very refreshing. You know, you go to some places and are really involved, but your, your residents are really thoroughly invested in what happens in Inkster, and I found that to be quite refreshing. And so thank you, you know, you have a wonderful police chief, so you don't need us at all for law enforcement. We just like to support in any way that we can. But I just want to continue to extend our partnership. I look forward to being a participant this Saturday, coming up at the Easter egg drop, and I'll be deputizing some kiddos, and I look forward to seeing you all. So thanks for having me again.
Thank you. Yvonne Moore.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
And all our citizens of Inkster. So I have three things to let you know real quick. You know, that Saturday, April twelfth, is our annual for unity in the community Easter egg hunt. We are looking forward to everyone showing up. We need all hands on deck. I mean, we're going to do three-legged races and sack races. So we're going to need some judges out there. We're going to make sure that we tie a couple of you guys' legs together and see how good you can do it, too. But we were, we are looking for a lot of things. I did ask for something, but I'm afraid he, he gets it for me. You know, Mr. Bibbins. So, you know, I know it's short notice, but, you know, you know. But you can handle it, though, Mr. Bibbins. I know, I have faith in you, so, you know. I want to tell you that as far as the, well, you know, that's because I want the grass and stuff done, so and all the weeds in the back for, for the park, but, you know. Got you, you got you, you got you. So our next thing I wanted to let you know was that we're still taking donations for candy, but the mayor just told me a really good thing, and I would have hugged him and kissed him, but I don't want Ms. Jennifer to get mad at me. Because he just told us that he purchased, you want to say it, Mayor? How much candy you give?
Eighty pounds of candy.
Yes, yes. But considering we're looking for five hundred-plus kids, and we're going to actually, so if you still want to give that donation for candy, we can use it. And we still probably end up buying a few little prizes. I did want to ask a question, because I don't understand stuff sometimes. I'm a little slow. So I'm going to ask a question. So I thought that it would be a good idea to do the marshmallows in this little thing, this little bag, and tie them up with the...
You can talk about that after the meeting.
I did, you know, because you can only put two in. I mean, I'm not trying to be funny. So, I mean, you know, that'll keep them from getting them off the ground. Because, you know, I know that...
You don't have to discuss details. You in charge. We deputize you to run the Easter egg hunt.
Well, I mean, because I, I'm, why is because I, we had kids picking up marshmallows off the ground last year, and it was before they could, mom could get them, they was already in their mouth. And so I don't want, especially where we're going to be at this time, and if, if we don't get it cleaned up real good.
It's eleven to three. Eleven to three.
No, well, you know, because the geese and everything be out there and stuff, and I don't want them to pick up something, put it in their, put it in their mouth, and then, of course, his mom.
Chief, why is she addressing you? What's going on here?
But it didn't matter.
Five thousand?
Because we, we, because we had, you know, we had people that, yeah, we had people that was had, were all hands on deck. So they were, they were waiting on them. We had all hands on deck, we had the gloves so that we could be able to do this.
Chief, you got your handcuffs? She got four seconds.
Okay, so I want you to see the bag. So, you know, actually, if the bags, the marshmallows will get put in here, tied up, got from the helicopter.
Ms. Moore, you must have heard the buzzer.
What's a buzzer? Y'all gave me a buzzer? Oh, Lord Jesus, that's what I, you know.
Did you even get to your second and third thing?
I did not, and that is just so hurtful.
The venus from eleven to three, eleven to three. Ms. Octavia Smith.
Sorry, it is from eleven to two.
Eleven to two.
Good evening again, Mayor, Council, residents. Coming to you on behalf of Inkster Chamber of Commerce. Just want you to know that on Tuesday, April the twenty-ninth, at the Leanna Hicks Library, we will have our second event for entrepreneurs who are looking for money, who need to get their business started. Again, it'll be held at Leanna Hicks Public Library from six P.M. to eight P.M. I will get you all that flyer as soon as possible so that you can sign up and register. We will have our entrepreneurs training, again, free of charge, on May the nineteenth. It will be held at Inkster Chamber Office, two-six-seven-one-seven Michigan Avenue, and that will be on Monday, May the nineteenth, at six o'clock P.M. For, we want to make sure that if you are an entrepreneur, you want to open up a business, this particular night is going to be for LLCs, so you can form your LLC that night. If you already have a business plan or something you think you want to do, and all of this is free of charge through Inkster Chamber of Commerce in collaboration with the Small Business Development Corporation. And I think that is everything from the chamber. And our general membership meeting will be on Tuesday, May the thirteenth. We have, we will give you the location when we get that location. We always like to support a local business and do our general membership there so that everyone could know and support the business that we have in the city of Inkster. So we will let you all know that in advance as well. Again, that will be Tuesday, May the thirteenth. Are there any questions at this time?
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you all.
Erin Sims.
Good day, Mayor and Council.
Good day.
I'm here for four-three-three-six Williams Street. The wait is finally over. We got a phone call the other day. The windows are finally finished for the home. So we will be having a small walkthrough coming real soon. In my request, I was asking for a, a block party for May seventeenth. As we know, this year will be Malcolm's one-hundredth birthday. So we would like to know what the protocol is to have a block party there that day. Talking to the family, not only will it be a block party, but it will be a memorial as well for Wilford, who actually owned the house. And from the family, they said that those two brothers were best of friends. Wilford was born February twelfth. Malcolm was assassinated February twenty-first. Malcolm was born May nineteenth, and Wilford passed away May nineteenth. So it's going to be a, a day of celebration. We just need to know what the protocol is to host a block party this Saturday before the nineteenth, that day. We will do a small, personal walkthrough with some of the family members of the little family. They are up in age, so the crowd won't be too big of doing a walkthrough of the house. But it will be a small walkthrough of certain people. And the historical marker is in the process of being made. So the grand opening will be the day the state of Michigan call us and tell us that the historical marker, historical marker will be delivered. So just to recap, May seventeenth, we would like to host a block party at four-three-three-six Williams Street. And we do have like some big stumps in the backyard. I don't know what the protocol is. If we could probably meet with the city and do like a walkthrough to see if we could just get some help getting those big stumps out or what the case may be, if possible.
Yep, Mr. Bibbins, you can go over there and get an estimate, and then we will present to council if we need to amend the budget. If, you know, the council's will is to amend the budget and do that. But go get a, send a tree guy over there and get asked.
You too, Mr. Simmons. You need to come to the clerk's office to pick up a packet requesting for that block party and return it to the clerk's office, and I will then put it on the agenda for approval by council.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Vadias Cirros.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Yes, I would like to speak, first of all, because I have two on my card. I'm going to get to the easy one first, about the tree trimming. Because I'm right there on, on north of a park between Meadow Brook and Blackstone, and right across from Riverview, the river, well, what, what it's called. River, it's river, go all around the city. And the trees, especially in the summertime, where the leaves haven't really developed now, but the, the branches hangs over the street. So when you drive through, especially if you get a higher vehicle, the branches touches the vehicle, you know. So that'd be good to get them, the branch, the trees trimmed, ready, especially when the summer come on. It's easier now since there's no leaves on them. Okay. Now, also, I want to speak on the reconstruction of the street. You know, the project started late spring of two thousand twenty-three, you know, when the streets was, was, the, the water line was built and the streets tore up, and dirt was thrown down and gravel long stirred straight. But now, when it rains, it, we still get muds and holes, so you still can't keep your cars and windows clean. So, and I know we had upgraded, we had a meeting concerning that, letting us know that it, we're going to have repair work done in the fall of two thousand twenty-four. But then it was an update saying they sent out emails and texts. I got one myself, letting us know that the reconstruction was start in...
March?
March, right, March, March the twenty-fifth. But I'm still waiting. So I just want to know if there's any update on the change of when it's supposed to start.
Mr. Bibbins?
Actually.
It's out for a bit.
Okay.
Oh, it's still, it's out to be it? Yeah, because almost like the neighbor, if y'all watch, remember Bewitched?
Oh, she going back, ain't she?
The good part of Gladys Crackers. So, so retired now, being a window looking at... I know, and then the house next to me, well, it's been remodeled and, and fixed up on, and I'm out there fussing with the constructors because they tearing up the streets, too.
That sound like you want to, you want to join the beautification committee. Ms. Henderson, you got, I think she need to join the beautification committee.
Yeah, I would, yeah, I was trying to do maybe a block club or something.
She got a little extra time on her hands.
Yes. So, did you say it's, well, there's still no date for it, when it's supposed to start? Still no date on the reconstruction?
As a city, we have to send every project out.
Grab it and say, okay, I want to, mm-mm. Okay. All right, then, thank you.
Thank you. Maureen Monahan.
Hello, Council and Mayor.
Hello.
I live at, my name is Maureen Monahan, too. I live at two-forty Amherst. I've been there forty-four years. I'm the second house off the corner of the side street, Mount Vernon. I've had to teach my nieces and nephews when crossing the street and they see a car not to go across the street because no one ever stops at Mount Vernon. Doesn't matter what time of day. So my question is, what can be done before we have a fatality? That's my first question. My thought was to have a police officer there to give out tickets. Although I don't know that you have anybody available, my next thought was possibly a camera to get it stopped. But it's all day, all night. Yes.
You're right.
My next problem is my garage. It's leaning five and a half inches south. And in the last twenty-five years, I have done various things to my garage to stop it from leaning. I had the garage shored up. I've replaced the sidewalk around my garage at least three times. I tried to find city records about, about the, how the house was built. I didn't get anywhere. I finally did find out that my footings were only fifteen inches, and that was code back in nineteen fifty-two. I did have the garage underpinning done. And now, and it's, when they done the underpinning and he was digging, it got to thirty inches and it hit water. Got to forty-two inches and there was no water. I did have someone come out to verify that it was structurally safe, and they said it is. But they said just to leave it for the next owner because it is a problem. Well, now it's come to my attention that I'm not the only house with a garage issue. There's four more, five more in my street. Structural integrity, the garages are leaning. The garage doors don't go up or down anymore. And I actually called the city out at one... And I actually called the city out at one time and they said it wasn't their problem. I have added nine and a half yards of dirt to my yard twice and I don't know where it's going. I'd like to see if someone could go out, come out and look at. It's just not me, which I didn't realize. Possible?
Yeah, well, let me talk to the city engineer and see if they'll go out and take a look at it. Yeah, that, obviously, that's, it's your property, but we could at least assess it and see what the problem is and what you can do.
Well, I was, I, at one time I was gonna put a fence in and I know the footing has to go down forty-two inches and at twenty-four inches, we hit something. Right at the fence line, which there's a lot of sewer and I don't know what it is back there. So I don't know what you didn't put it in because I don't know what it hit.
We shouldn't have hit, Mr. Bivins, sewer line at forty-two inches or?
I would think they'd be at forty-two, not twenty-four. No, at twenty-four inches, we hit something and I couldn't go down any further. I didn't know what it was and I certainly didn't wanna break it.
Okay, yeah, we'll send somebody over to take a look at your, your garage and your fence line.
Two forty Amherst.
Two forty, we have you on the card, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Two forty Amherst.
I see another Amherst now, Kimberly Johnson. I think this, this is a cool.
Hello, um, Council, Mayor, Council, resident of Inglewood. My name is Kimberly Johnson and I'm here on behalf of one of my neighbors and a good friend. She opened up a resale shop, um, called Benefits Corporation. Her name is Ashante Bennett, you, you may know her. And, um, is at ten forty Middle Belt Road, right at the corner of Avondale. And, um, she has prom dresses, home goods, items, shoes, purses, and much more. Her main objective to this retail shop is to help women come back into the workforce and particularly parole women. And as long as the women come with their documentation, their items are free. And, um, she's also looking for another building, her own building, because she's affiliated with the barber shop. So, um, she's looking for her own building, which I started helping her with that also. But I just wanted to let the council know and let everybody know that she is there, she's open, and it's a nice place, really nice place. She takes donations.
Okay.
She, she also want me to give you all cards.
It's good to see you, Ms. Johnson, ain't seen you in a while. Alright, Luana Abney Mitchell. Twice.
She twice.
You go, this is your world, we just here to entertain you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
I am fresh off the plane from Atlanta. It was such an honor for me to attend the National School Board conferences. With school board members from all over the world. And it was just an honor to wear this badge that says Wayne Westland Community Schools for Inglewood, Michigan. Everybody wanted to know about Inglewood. Well, of course, they wanted to know about me, but. Another story. But it was just an honor to meet people from California, um, Alaska, Mexican, Mexico, um, Indiana, Chicago, we was all, it was just a pleasure. And just to hear things that's going on in their district that's so familiar to our district. And everybody was ears in about our district being broken up into four different school districts and plus school of choice. So it was great conversation. And I just wanna piggyback on some of the things that, that the Senator Dana said, that, you know, we do have the driver's ed program, that's a pilot program, has been a great opportunity in too for our youth. We find that kids nowadays that's sixteen or seventeen, we couldn't wait to get our license. They jumping into Ubers, they don't even care about licenses. And we know that this is a way for them to be self-sufficient, to get back and forth, to have a job. And driver's license is a privilege. You know, everybody don't, you don't, you don't, you're not guaranteed to get driver's license. So that is a great program. Um, Senator Blanke and, um, Dillon, they do a great job, not only for the city of Inglewood, but for Wayne Westland School District. And I'm just happy to have them as our, um, Senator and our state representative. So the mentioned schools, it is class of two thousand twenty-five. I sent you guys a late email. And, um, once again, I am asking Mayor and Council to sponsor our students that's graduating, that lives in the city of Inglewood and go to neighborhood schools. Um, Mayor, um, I already ordered the graduation pens, they not two hundred dollars this year because we don't have to pay for the print part. It's already, it's only a hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
Why you single me out?
Cause you, cause you paid for them last year.
But they're independently wealthy.
I'm like, you are.
Mr. Freddie, that cake, we got cake this year. And ladies, y'all wanna make a donation, you know, if not just show up, I appreciate y'all. But there's several dates that I emailed y'all, so it's up to y'all convenience cause we know we got a lot going on. And we had to decide if we wanna have it at the complex, if it's available, or do we just wanna have something here during council meeting and just have a penance ceremony? So can we go back and forth with email about that?
Y'all in charge of that, y'all just tell me where to be and what time.
Oh, who in charge of it, so I? Felicia and Lindsay?
Yep.
I need some go-to people.
Right, I got you.
And the only other thing I had, um, as far as the school, oh, so. I'm an elected official, my time is never up. One of the things that I'm, I, I want the, um, Council and Mayor to really consider is, you know, and schools is politics, even though we don't believe it. Now, one of the things that other, um, um, city councils do, they have, I would like to see on your agenda for your council meeting to have a line for schools. Not for Luana to come and speak, but have everybody from the other districts come and speak at a meeting. There's a lot of stuff going on in our schools. We have incidents where twelve-year-olds are in the school passing out eatables.
Edibles?
Edables, eatables, edables. They are passing them out. Students are standing in line. We have had students have to go to the ER.
Oh, wow.
Because they felt like they was in a cartoon. So we have a serious problem and this is a school that service our Inglewood district. Our kids are being put out of school for having weapons. You know, we don't have metal detectors in our school. So we have to really start thinking about what's going on in our schools cause this is a serious problem. As of right now, one of the things I asked our interim superintendent, and she did give it to me, is that every one of our school board meetings, we have two schools come in and give us highlights and things that's going on in their buildings. So that's what, and so because they do that, one of the things that I found out that I didn't know, I seen it, but then I didn't, but it's in writing. So Wayne Memorial is about forty-seven percent African-American. And John Glenn is about forty-five percent. So the whole culture of the schools has changed. And right now, we have, um, me as, um, I am the vice president of the board. We have a, um, female president of the board. We still have Melody Heinz as secretary. We have one black male that's new on the board. We still have board members that have been on there for thirty and twenty years. But our school culture is changing. So we need, we need our community support, we need support from our Inglewood parents. You know, we, we need to, we cannot just let our high schoolers go to school no more. We had to treat them like they still in the first grade and check their backpacks. Cause a lot of times the kids is not bringing the weapons to school to hurt somebody. They bringing a weapon to school to protect theyself cause somebody is bothering them. So we have to go back to having them conversations with our kids is very critical. It's very critical and, um, Weapons Safety Middle School, I talked about that. What else I got?
Come on Cory Booker.
The penance ceremony, but, but that, but that's the most important thing and, you know, just being aware of our kids. We have four kids in my family, ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grade at John Glenn right now. They don't have lockers. What they take to school is what they walk in with. No backpack, no nothing. And they leave everything in the car. Because it's just too much going on and these kids, daily, daily. Our schools are going on soft lockdowns. It's, it's something always going on with these schools. And you won't, you won't know unless you involved, I would never believe it. Until I was involved and seeing and hearing it, I'm a part of the discipline committee and our kids is coming in there every week. We have like four or five hearings every Wednesday. And I, they are Inglewood kids. And I say they are Inglewood kids because I'm, the ones I know and recognize. The ones that I was parent support partners, but they moms when I was at behavioral health. So we have some serious problem with our kids and I'm like, why are we not making the connection with the officers? Be, with the police, because when something happened in the school, it spreads out in the community. So if our police officers know what's going on, they already got a heads up on it. So that's what I'm working on now, trying to work with the safety office, officers, trying to feel what we can do for our youth in Inglewood. Now, I'm a resident of the city of Inglewood. And I got a, um, I got a handy, a ticket for parking in the handicap zone. I got one in Taylor and I was able to take my handicap sticker in and they charged me twenty-five dollars. I got two in Inglewood and I was able to take my handicap sticker in and they charged me nothing. Now, I don't want the residents to side-shot and fires, but we need to get revenue. It's no reason why we not doing what other surrounding neighborhoods, communities, cities are doing. Somebody get a ticket, charge them, the staff had to stop what they was doing and come and service them. So that's something y'all can think about, but you know, we need the revenue. I don't, I don't wanna pay money, but it is what it is. And we have to do what other cities surrounding us is doing that's able to fix things in their neighborhood because they have money, cause they getting revenue. And go out there on M Street and get them tickets. Thank you guys.
Thank you. Artie J Robb.
How y'all doing this evening? I haven't talked to you all in a long time, I hate to bother you. But I just wanna say, I haven't, uh, you know, whatever feathers that was ruffled during election time, I wanna say I apologize to you all if I rubbed your feathers. But I'm saying I love you all, I love you all, I have a very, uh, I'm, I'm saved. And I, and I'll go with that spirit of my church today. If you don't have a majority, hey, roll with it as the minority. But the minority gotta be listened to and have to be making sure that we take care of the things that's, that the folks wanna be done. As far as for me, I'm gonna slow down so I can make sure that's very clear for you all. I'm not here to do any complaints, I'm just here to say, brother Bivins and you guys, good job on this notice winter. You guys did a great job on that, but we do have other things we do need to work on. And my thing is, as far as with ordinance with, uh, the gas stations and businesses. You know, the businesses and the gas stations around there and I applaud you all for, uh, even taking, you know, putting that stuff on the table with the gas station and having liquor on the corner. Cause we the only city that got five gas stations in one mile radius. We got five gas stations in one mile radius and then we don't need another gas station. You can't go in no other city that have five gases in one area. Then we need to start to figure out a way to use our codes and use our enforcement to destroy them or whatnot, you know? Cause they got traffic going, they got crap gas all on the floor, don't power wash the parking lots. It's just, you know, it's looking a mess. And it's good that, uh, Inglewood Plaza just did a little upgrade up there, that's a good job on that, whoever did that. Give it up for them on the Inglewood Plaza, cause it is looking good there. And the other thing I wanted to talk about was, uh, as far as with the codes, code enforcement and with, with our senator that was just here, I wanna make sure that you guys get this tour, that they have another airport noise survey. I don't wanna make sure that Inglewood's a part of that. We suffer from all this airport noise, we've been looked over. And this, the reason they looked over is because they know they're gonna have to do the whole entire city of Inglewood. They did every city around us, new windows, new furnaces, new all of those doors and all those things. They did from Dearborn, Garden City to Dearborn, they stopped at, stopped at Indianapolis and started back here at, uh, at, uh, what's that, Cherry Hill here, you know, well, actually not Cherry Hill, but the street before that. But, uh, any case, those things need to be addressed. We need to get, you know, commissioners or get you some type of committee together to, uh, be addressing it with our state senator and our state representative. And also with the EPA funds that's available for Rouge River, as this young lady was talking about, about the water flooding the neighborhoods and all of that. That's why garages are sinking. I live right there in, uh, in the Dearborn Hills District, right there, brother, uh, Bishop's District, right there. Be right there, my whole backyard, I just had to go through a bunch of crap cleaning it all out cause I had been doing some construction for a time. But my water was up to my ankle in my backyard the day after I did it, I took pictures of it as well. But it's a, it's a current, a reoccurring thing that's going on that you guys, the city engineer, could check it out. Because right now, I, I did pour like, uh, you know, a couple yards of dirt back there about five years ago. But now, I'm sorry, I told you it wasn't gonna be three minutes, but, uh, in any case, I poured the dirt back there, but I'm still flooding inside my garage and then inside my house up under my deck cause I have a dishing, the water came right down through my electric box in the back. That's how high the water was. But that's what I'm really just here to tell you all, you know, keep on doing what you're doing and spread love and we gonna make it, right?
Alright.
Spread love. And don't forget about youth baseball, y'all did it last time, we gonna do it again this time, okay? God bless y'all, spread love.
A.C. Williams.
Good evening, everyone, um, Mayor, Council and residents. So I'm on the planning commission, I'm on the downtown development authority, I'm on the grants committee. I'm taking the lead on redevelopment-ready community pathway to be certified, which by the way, we're at eighty-seven percent. Um, and so I just say all that to say that, um, I know redevelopment and development is on everyone's mind, but it's, it's something that I've committed my daily time to, um, which is why I'm often up here trying to speak to our broader goals and making sure that we're heading in the direction that I know, um, we want. So we have the master plan and the master plan is long. And I understand that it may not be something that everyone, um, can refer back easily to and kind of understand what direction we're going in. Um, so, uh, in my day-to-day job, I work with data and I work with giving policy recommendations based on that data. And I understand that sometimes taking the abstract ideas, um, and trying to bring them to fruition or kind of understanding what it could possibly be can be difficult unless you have something in front of you. And so when we were at the last planning commission meeting, when we were getting some of these cases in front of us and some of the concern was, well, this was an auto, you know, shop, why can't it be that again? You know, what else could it be? I volunteered myself to create a list of sorts to kind of give people a reference so they can kind of understand what our alternative options are. Um, because, uh, it is about coming up with a more balanced business ecosystem. And we want a variety of businesses here in Inglewood, uh, other than the gas stations and the liquor stores and the auto shops. We want restaurants, we want cafes, we want, you know, uh, grocery stores. We want, um, you know, mixed, uh, housing, is a variety of things. So it's gonna take a lot of work for us to get there, but with that being said, I wanted to share. So I, I did email you guys a Business and Community Impact Guide, but I also created some- but I also created something that was a little bit more detailed, so can I bring it up to you guys real quick? And so some of the highlights of those pages include what our desired businesses are. And as I mentioned earlier, case studies that include Detroit. I believe I have some from Ohio. And a list of business alternatives for how we can take, especially Michigan Avenue, some of our downtown area and turn it into what we want. And so of course, if you want to take the time, look it over. I kind of consider it like a smaller master plan guide, at least a quick reference of sorts. And I'll end that there, because the last thing I need to represent is, as a niece, for Vanilla Williams on John Daly, because she asked me to bring, so they had a truck, a sweep, cleaning truck that broke the concrete in front of the house, right there in the driveway. And it was a huge hole, tall enough for people to literally stand in it. The county, I guess, or whoever we contracted with came and fixed it. And then they just kind of went over it with gravel of sorts, and it's really still a mess. It's very difficult for my ninety-year-old grandmother to park or get out of the car when my aunt drives and drops her off. And so she wanted me to come and see if someone can come and check it out.
John Daly and what?
It's right there off of, it's thirty-six thirty, John Daly, right off there, near the new pump station that's going in, yeah, Carlisle. And that's it.
We will check it out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ashana Bux.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just want to announce again, just to let everyone know that it is definitely on the books, April nineteenth, from eleven a.m. to three p.m., we did change the hours. We are doing the Earth Day Celebration, Parks and Recreation Commission is teaming up with the Recreation Center. And we're launching early in April for our summer programming. We have a lot of things that have been going on up there at the Rec Center this year. So we want to get everybody out, we want everybody to come, we're going to have a kids Lego build station. We're going to have some Earth Day grab bags for kids to take home with them. You can come, you can bring a picnic, you know, sit down, and, you know, we have a few words to share with everybody about the park, its history, we're rededicating it back to the community. We're putting some shade trees in around the playscape, a lot of the children. They will really enjoy that, so they can play without being burned by the sun. The families can sit around under other trees and watch the children play, and it can be turned into a really nice area. We've teamed up with Friends from the Rouge. They will be assisting us with this, with the tree planting. We received sixty-six trees from the ARC grant that we received a few years ago, so we're going to utilize that. All sixty-six trees will be going at Park Wood Park, as right now, from what we're planning, how we're going to plant the trees. They're all going to go there at Park Wood Park. And with that, we're also going to have, we're going to have about fifteen planted on April nineteenth. We're going to plant the rest with the Ford group, there are volunteers from Ford Motor Company coming to help us plant the rest of the trees. So we ask that everybody comes out April nineteenth as well as May ninth. April nineteenth, we'll be there eleven to three, and then we'll be able to for sure announce the time that they'll be there for Ford for May ninth to complete the project, for anybody else that wants to come out for the completion. I do have flyers here. We will have some light refreshments, you know, some music, nice little entertainment for a few hours for families to come out and enjoy the day. The weather is supposed to be nice, I'm looking at possibly in the fifties, but it's Michigan, so those things could change. So I'm going to play some flyers up front, we're going to post them all over social media. We ask everyone in the community to please come out and support. We ask all of our community leaders, our council, and the other leaders in our community to please come that day, so that we can, we could dedicate this park to the community and just really enjoy one of the beautiful parks that we have here in the city of Inglewood. So that is all. Thank you.
Last one, it says Gay Johnson, I don't know if it's Gary. Oh, gay, okay.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Council, thank you for your response, I instant-messaged you. And I was taking care, appreciate that.
I am here on behalf of Robichaud Alumni Committee. We usually have alumni picnic. This year will be August thirtieth, and we usually have it at Tyrone Wheatley Park. And one of the previous meetings that I attended, they said we were going to be renovation to the park. As one of the committee members, I want to know when the renovation is going to take place, how long, and if we are still able to have our, excuse me, picnic at the park, or do we need to find another location?
We just signed an agreement with Giffords Webster to manage the renovation project, it will start this summer. But let me, we haven't met with them yet, so let me let them know, make sure we have your dates. I would think we could still have a picnic, I mean, that's my goal.
Do you need me to supply you with our date or whatever? August thirtieth from ten to seven.
Ten to seven, okay.
Yes.
We'll work it out, we don't want to stop the tradition, so.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, that's all for the public participation. Madam Clerk.
I received public comment from Charles Blackwell. It has been distributed to Mayor and Council, and it will be put in the meeting minutes.
That's all you got?
Yep.
Okay, Mr. Treasurer? Oh, I'm sorry, she's got more.
On April the second, the city of Inglewood, the Clerk's Office hosted the Wayne County Clerk Quarterly Meeting. It was well-attended. Mayor Nolan attended briefly, gave greetings, it was very nice. I would just like to say thank you to Chief Jenkins for supplying us with the decor. And to Lisa Bernie for bringing the decor and helping us set up, it was greatly appreciated. Also to the Stardust Luxury Lounge for catering, the food was delicious, we received many compliments, and it was a huge success, and that's it.
Councilwoman Scott. We got one more? Oh, this came in. I'm sorry, Monique Taylor, Burton Street.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
I'm a representative from Burton Street here in Inglewood, where there's a lot of senior citizens and we have a lot of complaints about the water. I've talked to some of the neighbors, I have rusty water in my bathtub, so does the man across the street from me. Last week, we had a real low pressure in the water. Yeah, I got calls from the neighbors, and they were asking me the same thing. And this is water that we're paying for that we can't drink. So I'm here to get some answers and see what's going on with the water.
Last week, we had a water main break right off of Middle Belt, and that's what affected everybody's water in your neighborhood, as well as some of the people in Inglewood housing. Everybody saw the article on TV.
Yeah.
Lady had brown water. When you have a water main break, dirt gets into the line, and that's why you have brown water. But she didn't realize it was a water main break, because she didn't sign up for Code Red or had downloaded the Inglewood, City of Inglewood app, so she didn't get the notification. So she called the news and said, why do I have brown water? And actually, they were here tonight, but I told them there was nothing on their agenda regarding water, they decided to leave. So yeah, that's what happened last week, I don't know why you have brown water today in your bathtub, I'm not sure.
No, it's rusty, whenever I turn it on in the bathtub, and you have to let it run for quite a while before it clears up.
What do you, I'm not sure what that would be.
I'm boiling water and, you know, to rinse dishes and things like that. It's, and it's been like that for a while.
We have our address, we should go test the water. Okay, we'll come over, are you there during the day?
Up until about twelve, but if I know you're coming, I'll stay home.
Give me your phone number, we want to come over there and test the water. Mr. Vivins, get her phone number. All right. Thank you, all right. Now, Councilwoman, oh, I'm sorry, Dan said no comments, right? Councilwoman Scott?
Just shopping, sir.
Councilwoman Bishop? Councilwoman Rabbit? Councilwoman? I know you do, I know you do.
Just a reminder that the Wayne County Treasurer did extend the arrangements where you can pay your property taxes if you're behind and you're in foreclosure. You have until April the eighth to four thirty. So you can go in and make arrangements, don't let your home go into foreclosure. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Howe?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, just real quick, Mayor Pro Tem Steve Chisholm's not here tonight, he lost his uncle. Tonight was a visitation, tomorrow's the funeral, so keep him in your thoughts. Water meters will start being installed April twenty-first. So if you have garbage day on Monday, look in your mailboxes, you should be getting a letter from Hydro Corps to tell you to set up your appointment so you can get your water meter switched out. And we also will be putting out a schedule for the rest of the city very soon, so you have an idea of when they're going to be in your area. But we're following the garbage day, so Monday, section first, Tuesday, Wednesday, until we get to Friday, okay? I already talked about the news article about the water. Smoke, is it Smoke City Chief? We had a business on Cherry Hill in the plaza, it's one of those smoke shops, you buy tobacco and different things. They were actually, got in a little trouble, they were selling marijuana and edibles and other products out of there. So essentially, they were unlicensed dispensary. So when you guys, you know, we didn't know for a long time, so when you see this in your community, someone's operating outside of law, please let us know. I think they're temporarily closed down right now.
They are.
And they, you know, we had to issue a search warrant, and, you know, stuff was in there that should not have been in there, that's what I would say. But since the investigation's still open, we won't talk about it too much. But just let us know what's going on in our community, we can't have that. People, this is the example, people come here and think they can do whatever they want to do. You know, this is kind of what we're talking about. All right, one minute. And this Saturday, I went to the Hands Off Rally, which was very interesting, down at the DIA. I don't know if you guys saw it on TV or you participated. There were thousands and thousands of people in downtown Detroit. This is the first time, I think, in my lifetime I've seen unrest like this. So we need to pay attention to what's going on at federal level, on the state level, it's a lot of stuff happening. To give you an example of how it affects us, last year, we were awarded $1.6 million in the federal budget to build an amphitheater and a farmer's market in our old downtown. When the administration changed in November, they canceled all the community-based projects. We lost that project, everybody lost projects all across the country. So even though we got approved, they never approved the budget that would start at October first of 2024. They just keep doing continuing resolutions, so that project is gone. We don't know what's going to happen next year, we're not terribly optimistic. So these type of things do affect our community. So just pay attention, be aware, and make sure we know what's going on, so we can inform our neighbors and other residents, so we can keep our eyes open and stay ready. And that's all I got, it's basketball game starting in ten minutes. You have a motion to adjourn? Probably move in a second, all those in favor?